The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on January 12, 2024. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, and Taff into Warren, and filed with the Township Clerk of the Township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, consider Republic, for Saint, one nation, under God, indivisible, like liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Hagel?
I will call the roll. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. Whitebaum? Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Malfetta?
Here.
Mr. Otto? Mr. Tor? Mr. Valentino? Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
We have a quorum.
To accommodate some scheduling issues that we're having this evening, the agenda is going to be more or less followed, but there may be some rearrangement of items. So at this time, we will not be going directly into executive session. We're going to head on to the minutes, Ms. Keller.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the June 10, 2024 board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll call the roll on the minutes. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
No correspondence to report. There was one HIV investigation at Summer Funny S Y. It was not confirmed. And then in the suspension report, the board has the final suspensions from the end of the school year, which was one in school and two out of school at the middle school and one in school at Woodland.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Welcome everyone to the July Board of Education meeting. Just a couple of very quick notes. Petitions to appear on the November ballot as a candidate for the Board of Education are due next Monday, July 29 by 4:00 p.m. at the county office. Further information about any paperwork that you might need if you wish to file a petition to appear on the ballot can be found on the district's website. On behalf of the Board of Education, I want to extend a thank you to the New Jersey High Impact Tutoring for its grant in the amount of $115,000, which appears for approval on tonight's agenda as item B27. And finally, a sincere thank you to the Township Committee of Warren who last Thursday approved a financial contribution agreement with the district, which will represent a funding to the district of $150,000 in pilot funds. That agreement has been signed by both parties and is a groundbreaking agreement between a municipality and a school district for sharing in pilot funds. And we are very grateful for the efforts of the Township Committee and their approval. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle.
Nothing here. I do have a few agenda comments that I can give later on when we go to the agenda.
So, which is, well, first we do public commentary. There is no presentation scheduled for this evening. There are two discussion items, but in order to prioritize necessary business and given our scheduling challenges this evening, the two discussion items are postponed until later in tonight's agenda, and they will be dealt with then. Similarly, committee reports are going to appear later in the agenda. So at this point in time, we're going to open the floor for the first opportunity of public commentary. This is the first of two opportunities for public commentary. I ask that anyone interested in addressing the board please raise their hand or use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom. Each speaker is asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address and by directing your comments to the presiding officer. Please know that the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Public commentary is intended as an opportunity for the board to receive such input, but is not intended as a Q and A session. Following public commentary, if appropriate, the presiding officer or the superintendent may provide some response. For this first opportunity, we ask that your comments be limited to items that appear on tonight's agenda. There will be a second comment opportunity for all other comments later in the meeting. So at this time, seeing no one in our live audience, I'm going to go directly to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close public commentary?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Public commentary is now closed. Dr. Mingle, do you have any comments on the agenda items?
I do, thank you, Mrs. Zahn. I actually have several that I'd like to just share for the board members, but also for the members of the public related to agenda item A5, which is preschool expansion aid. The district is applying for state aid to support our general education preschool program. If the district receives this aid, we will be provided funding for our general education preschool students, which would allow us to return the tuition that families currently paying it would, we would be able to return their tuition to them once that aid was received. And then over the next several years, we would be expanding that preschool program for additional students, as long as we are able to simultaneously expand our availability for facility space, which is something that we'll be talking about perhaps today, but also at future meetings as far as adapting to growing student enrollment in the district. On that same front, items B17, B18, and B22 are all related to capital improvements. Per the Capital Improvement Plan, which was adopted at the last meeting, we are engaging the district's architect of record to develop plans for a 2025 referendum proposal, a roof replacement project outside of the anticipated referendum, and preliminary work to identify the options for meeting the district's long-term facility needs for new housing as it comes online and for our preschool and special education programs, which continue to grow to meet the needs of our students and our community's priorities. Item B19 is approval for a strategic plan facilitator. Thank you to Mrs. Zahn, Ms. Keller, and Mr. Tor for interviewing three candidates for that and a second round of interviews with two candidates. Approval is on the agenda tonight. Item B26 and C19 are combined for a shared services agreement with the Benminster School District, which is our way of supporting a colleague in the county with providing a school media specialist. Thank you to Mr. Hagel for working through some of those details. We're happy to help another district in a way that does not in any way take away from our ability to provide services to our students. I point to item C1, which has a lot of approvals for hiring. This is the annual process, but when you compare it as well to item C5, which is the approval for new positions, you can see that we have added several additional positions this summer. This is to meet actual enrollment needs that are greater than anticipated. So we have additional staffing on the agenda tonight. Two long-term retirements, Mrs. Raza and Mr. Kilroy. Congratulations to both of them and we thank both of them for their long-term service to the district. And finally, item D3, which is the abolishment of a policy that was in place specifically for the declared health emergency. There are no changes to our practices and the availability of our meeting on Zoom, but that policy is no longer necessary because it's embedded in other places.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Does any member of the board wish to poll any item for board consideration for further discussion or separate note? No? Okay, Ms. Keller?
Motion to move items for board consideration, A1 through A6, B1 through B27, C1 through C19, and D1 through D3.
Motion.
Second.
I can call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Malfetta?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Motion's pass five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Hagel. At this time, we're going to go back to item five on tonight's agenda, which is the board retreat specifically with regard to district goals only, Dr. Mingle.
So annually at this retreat, we brainstorm on a long list of potential district priorities. However, last summer at this time, we identified two-year markers for our district goals. So for the board members, if you go to the very last page of the agenda, we have our 2023, 2024 district goals there around student achievement in ELA, math, and SEL, belonging, and operations. Our intention this time last year was to continue that exact same focus, but with our second year outcome expectations. It's my proposal that that is what we do. That would be on the next agenda in August for approval so that people can comment on it in the meantime, with the addition of a goal to adopt a new strategic plan for 2025 to 2030. Happy to answer questions about that or, you know, address any other ideas we have.
Questions, comments from the board with regard to district goals for 2425?
No, I don't have any questions. We've seen these before.
Yep.
And...
Okay.
I don't have any of that.
This will appear for approval then on our August agenda? So at this time, we're going to move into executive session.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education turns to closed session to discuss material, the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation, and/or matters of attorney-client privilege, and prospective, specific prospective or current employees unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session. Action will be taken upon...
May.
Be taken, may be taken upon return of public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately...
Forty-five minutes?
Forty-five minutes. And be further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? The board is now in executive session.
All in favor? Opposed, staying? The board is now back in open session. At this point, we are moving, there is no unfinished business listed for this evening, so we are moving directly into new business, which is a discussion by the Board of Policy 5516, Use of Electronic Communication and Recording Devices. A conversation on this policy was requested by our Board Member, Mr. Weinstein, so I am going to let him lead us. Mr. Weinstein.
All right, thank you. Okay, so yes, it is 5516, Use of Electronic Communication and Recording Devices. I printed it out, made sure to read it a couple of times, so I knew what I was talking about. I specifically would like to, and if you don't have it in front of you, that's okay, we can have a discussion either way. It's the third paragraph that speaks about use of cell phones in school while school is in session. And the discretion of the teacher in terms of the usage of that phone during a classroom lesson and permission of the principal, and there's other verbiage within the policy. So some of you may or may not have been paying attention to some of the chatter that has occurred close to us in New York, across the country, in LA, and other places regarding, and I guess the two are connected, but I want to focus strictly on this policy because that's what we do on the Board of Ed versus veering elsewhere. In terms of social media, the impact on kids, but then very closely connected cell phones. So there are schools in LA that are banning phones. New York City schools are planning this in February. There is a social psychologist whose last name I'm probably not going to pronounce correctly, Jonathan Haidt, H-A-I-D-T, who's well chronicled through CNN, The Wall Street Journal, and other news outlets, as well as the American Psychological Association piggybacking a lot of his comments in terms of how he feels the effects or impact that social media and cell phones, let's just talk about cell phones, are having on K-38 districts. And by no surprise, the impact and effects are not positive. There's another outlet called Wait Until Eighth, which is eighth grade. It's a pledge that 60,000-plus families have pledged or backed to delay smartphones until students get to eighth grade or beyond. So I think in light of this research, which admittedly is one-sided, I just think it makes sense to revisit the allowance at all of cell phones in our K-38 districts. And I'll kind of leave it at that, and I'm happy to have a discussion on the board because, look, I don't think we're going to come to consensus right here and now on a potential policy change, but I do think it warrants a discussion.
If I may, before the rest of the board comments, perhaps it would be helpful, Dr. Minkle, could you say what the current, describe how phones are used, if at all, in our schools right now?
So, policy-wise, as Mr. Weinstein was talking about, it says that they can't be used unless the teacher has an instructional purpose for that. So by policy, they're not being used almost at all, but I think the unsaid part is about students finding ways to get access to their phone when they're going to the restroom, or this is really a middle school discussion.
Yeah.
The policy predates our one-to-one being so ubiquitous with Chromebooks. So there's really almost never a reason now that a teacher should need students to use their own device in Warren because we provide them the technology they need on a day-to-day basis. That significantly changes when the bell rings and students go to extracurricular activities and athletics, that's when the phones come out widespread. The current practice at the middle school is that according to the handbook, cell phones are supposed to be in their locker, in students' lockers during the school day and not on their person. This is a common cause of disciplinary consequences for students who are seen with their cell phones at other times.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's accurate.
I think it's, I think to not have maybe severe consequences is probably part of the issue is there is, there is a policy and, you know, as Dr. Minkle stated, there's certain aspects of it that really show that kids shouldn't need it during the school, I guess, session. But to not enforce a severe discipline, I think, is the problem. There's no fear of consequence. They know, ah, you know, ah, it's what's the big deal? It's, and we know it's a big deal. We know it's causing issues. I know personally, as a parent, I like my kids more when they're not using their devices. They're just a better, you know, the better version of themselves. And I think that can be said probably for most kids. So we as a district, I think, Todd, I think we should do something about it.
Do you know how you get rid of consequences, Rich?
Say again?
Mr. Muffet, excuse me. Do you know how you get rid of consequences? You eliminate the problem.
I think it's, I happen to agree with you on this topic a whole hun-
Well, the alleged problem, my alleged problem.
And I think there's a concern from parents to say, well, God forbid, there's an emergency. How do I get in touch with my, my child? And we do understand that, and we're not being insensitive to that. But if we apply a little bit of common sense to, you know, our lives growing up, not having it, what we, the amount of time that we spent with our eyes up, looking at the world around us and getting a a real-life experience versus a virtual experience, and I'm not going to say which is better, but I will say that I think that's what's missing in today's world.
So I could, I mean, I could be wrong. I don't. So maybe there is some language updating that needs to happen to say they shouldn't be allowed at all if we now have Chromebooks. If everybody has a Chromebook, then I don't really know if a teacher is going to be in a situation where they're like, did you take out your phone? I, I don't, maybe that's where we need to do some more research to see how often this is a problem. It seems like most kids are leaving it in their lockers. They're not bringing it to the class. From what I understand, they have such little time in between classes to even get to their locker, let alone checking anything on their phone. So maybe we need to just figure out, like, how often is this really a disciplinary issue? Is there a lot of repeat offenders, if you will? Because I don't, I don't know. I just don't, I honestly don't know if it's that big of an issue. If kids are actually using it in the class when they shouldn't be, I just don't know. I mean, we didn't, my seventh grader just got one like last month, so, so I totally agree. I mean, but I just don't know. It seems like it's a, it seems like it's being pretty well enforced, that kids aren't really using it during the class, they're not. If anything, I think there's a lot of kids who have smartwatches that are texting. So we might also need to include that because that is a communication vehicle, like you can text from your, from your smartwatch, so. But I don't know, I'm a whole, I'm sorry, Mr. Desai, were you going to say?
No, I was just going to add to what Rich said. In case of an emergency, the kids should be paying attention to the authorities.
Yes.
Not, not getting distracted, giving, you know, information to the parents.
Hundred percent.
On that, yeah. There's no need for the kids to have phones during emergencies, that you should pay attention to the authorities.
Dr. Minkle, is there any circumstances, saying aside the language here about teachers can use some whatever, set that aside. Is there any circumstance during the course of the school day where any student should have their phone on their person at all? Lunches, bathrooms, anything?
The only example I can think of is there are some students with diabetes who their diabetes management goes to an app, but that's, I mean, we're talking about like
Okay.
three students out of seventeen.
Okay, so we can provide for exceptions. So if they're already not allowed at all, then is it true to say that a child who is observed with a phone at any time during the school day, that consequences, perhaps insufficient consequence, but consequence is immediately attached, that the phone is, what, taken from them?
So the policy allows for confiscation, and if, if the Board is going to consider changes- And if, if the board is going to consider changes to the policy, I did ask the middle school administration what would be helpful to them in enforcement. The, the biggest challenge are parents being opposed to the consequences being imposed, imposed on their children. And so if it was in the policy that administration shall confiscate a phone, or maybe you get one offense the second time, uh, or that, and there are some places that do this, if, if the phone is confiscated, it has to be picked up by the adult responsible for that child. Um, those sorts of things would probably have an impact on what happens.
Okay.
Um, it's not that the policy doesn't allow that right now, but it's very difficult for the administration to enforce something like that. But with the backup of the board, that would be significant. There, so yes, consequences follow. There's a, you know, an increasing gradient depending on how many times somebody, the other thing I want to point out is that the, I appreciate the comment about the smartwatches. This has been a conflict with some parents in the last year or two where they'll say, well, it's not a cell phone, but it operates effectively the same way. It's extremely distracting.
Yeah.
Um, I just, right now, there's nobody in the audience and maybe not a lot of people online either. Uh, we do hear this argument that you're all expressing from parents a lot about in case of emergency. I would reiterate what Mr. Desai said, the last thing we want kids doing during an emergency is taking out their own personal device. Um, it creates more chaos than us being able to manage the situation when that's going.
Hundred percent. I think it's any device that allows for two-way communication, you know, during the school, this session, that's it. It's.
Is it practical to ban their presence at all? I mean, is that enforced? How would we even enforce that? We're currently saying they have to put them in their lockers, they have to stay in their lockers during school hours. Is there, is it even possible and enforceable to say they may not be brought at all?
The, the places that are putting those kinds of bans in place generally have metal detectors so that you can, you know, if somebody's bringing it in. I, I would go further to say that I don't know that it's necessary to do that because there are legitimate reasons why students need them after school hours and before school hours to contact their ride at the end of soccer practice or whatever. Um, increasing the lockdown, if you will, during eight to three, or whatever the school hours are, would probably achieve many of the goals people are talking about and still leave the room for after hours. It doesn't eliminate things that could happen during that window um, or on the buses and that sort of thing, but it would be very, it would be difficult for us to do that without searching or metal detectors or something like that.
And I think, you know, upping the consequence, and maybe it's, you know, you get a pass once, that's it. Like no more than once, once, twice, no, one time. Like know what your focus is and be focused at school, follow the rule, and, and you will be fine.
Even though on the bus, uh, Mr. Mangle, is it possible we have a basket that they just drop their, for some of the things that happened last year? Did the hip cases was related to phone being, oh, some of the hip cases that happened last year was due to the phones being used on the bus. Maybe there's a common basket that people just drop off their phones on the bus and, or it's fine.
We would probably have to find out, so the tricky part about the bus is that we're not the ones on the bus, it's drivers for a private vendor. However, consequences for disciplinary violations on the bus are our responsibility, so it gets a, I get a little bit nervous about taking possession of a device that costs $1,400 from each student as they get on the bus. But the consequences for being seen with a device could also be increased on the bus. And we do have camera access, so we would, we can check on complaints about that sort of thing.
Gotcha.
So it might be possible to ban the use. I don't know. The enforceability question would be a challenge, but it doesn't mean that it couldn't be done.
I think for me, it's classroom time. Like, I mean, I understand if we're going to, we're going to fight a fair fight or something that we believe in. Um, there has to be a level of compromise, and I think, you know, we, we, we always hope that kids are raised to not, right, be negative or bullying or whatever it is on the bus and, and that when they get to school, their focus is on, on learning and socializing to a degree. But, you know, on the bus is going to be hard. And I think, you know, during the school, you know, period, school day, and then, you know, after, okay, they need to communicate extracurricular, that's fine. But it's, the point is, it's like, okay, if we're going to, if we're going to say so, then when it's violated, we're going to say so, and there's going to be a consequence.
Dr. Minkle, do you know if, if it says, the policy says that, um, the building principal may confiscate cell phones that are turned on in violation of this policy? Do you know how, um, often that happens? I mean, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but like, are teachers, our staff, do they feel empowered to be able to do that, or is that more of like a repeat offense?
It definitely happens. Um, I don't know, I, I don't, I can't answer exactly how much, but I could follow up on that.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think I like Ms. Keller's idea of kind of understanding what the, the data is around the volume of incidences. Um, that might help to, if we want to go down the path of rewording this excerpt in the policy, could be beneficial because, I mean, I personally am a believer in using whatever data is available to drive a decision because the data is unbiased.
Volume of reported issues, though.
Yeah, that could be one.
You know, like, this could be, could be under-reported.
You're right. I hear you. Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing. It's like, I, we all know what the policy says, but we all know that there's a gray area within rules and ways around the rules because that's just what happens. And this is just one example of some, some rule-breaking while not being seen by a teacher or a principal or whomever the authority is. So I, I'm a little Switzerland on this, but I'm more in favor of if you completely eliminate the quote-unquote "problem," then the consequences do not matter. And I know that there will be parents in the community that are not happy with that. I'm fully, fully aware of that. But again, if I go back to, I'll butcher his name, Jonathan Haidt or Haidt, one of the things he brings up is, think about when you grew up in whatever decade you grew up, three cell phones and you brought your TV to class, you brought the VCR, you brought all your pictures, you brought encyclopedias that you were reading on your desk, I'm not saying this happens, but hypothetically, while you were there for a specific solitary reason, which is to learn. That's the best comparison he could come up with, three cell phones to what potentially is happening today. And again, I know they're not looking at their cell phones while classes being conducted.
Picture book actually makes sense, like a photo album, like, you know, that, that's something, I mean, nobody's bringing a VCR, but I mean.
Yeah, that's why I think, I think I'm struggling, like, I think we all agree that it's a, it's a problem, it's a, you know, systemic issue, it's social media, it's the devil. I totally agree. I just don't know if we really, how much this is really a problem in our classrooms today. That's, that's what I'm kind of struggling with this, you know what I mean?
It's a problem not only in the classroom, I think it's a problem in general. I think if you look around the kids today, how many more kids get the dopamine rush? How many more kids are overstimulated? How many more kids don't have the ability to have a normal conversation because they speak in soundbites, because they watch garbage short clips? And we're all guilty of that. I mean, as adults, we do it, but I, I think it's not just a problem in the classroom, it's, it's a problem in general.
Totally agree. We can't, we can't control this. I'm trying to get to, like, what are we actually doing with this? You know what I mean? Like, what?
Yeah, I think there's two roads, right? There's revising the language in the current policy to, um, be more consequential and direct, if possible, or the path that I was talking about, which is completely eliminating the existence of cell phones and smartwatches in schools.
If I may, um, just my personal view, I oppose cell phones in hallways, in the lunchrooms, in the classrooms during school hours, period. Love to keep them in the lockers, and if they're seen, I think they should be confiscated and the parents should be required to come and pick it up. So that's just kind of where my head's at, but at this juncture, we are beginning to run up against the clock here. So, um, as a moving forward item, I do think that there's, that there's a messaging benefit to having the Board of Education take on this policy, change the policy, change the underlying code of conduct manuals that the children get before they come to school and messaging out that this is something that we take seriously and that there will, you know, that the policy is being changed to address how seriously we take this and that the consequences are clear and consistent. So again, start the year off fresh and in a good way with the support of, I mean, the administration telling us kind of what they think they need in the way of board support to get them to where they can run the schools effectively. Um, that, to me, seems like we need some sort of delegation of the policy to somewhere to be rewritten. That's a committee item, I think we.
So my request would be, the, the curriculum committee has a meeting on August 19th, which is one week before the next board meeting. So, um,
Yeah.
if you direct administration to bring to the curriculum committee a first draft revision, which can also be circulated to the full board.
Yeah.
That gives us time to even have it on the next agenda for first.
That, that would be my recommendation. Does the rest of the board agree with that? Okay, so, so we're going to send, um, this policy to the curriculum committee um, and then come back to the board with that committee's recommendation. Okay?
Great.
Awesome. Um, at this juncture, we're going to move into the second opportunity for public commentary. Um, uh, this is open to any topic you wish to raise to the board's attention. Again, I ask that you raise your hand or use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. Remember that comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address before beginning. We have nobody present in our live audience, so going to Zoom. Last chance. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close second commentary?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. At this juncture, I need a motion to table all of the remaining items that appeared on tonight's agenda that we were not able to get to in the timeframe that we had. And those will appear as unfinished business on our August agenda. Ms. Keller?
Do you want me to list everything or, or just say, just everything we didn't cover?
Okay. Motion to move all the items we did not cover this evening to the August board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
I think that's probably right. All right, so this is a motion to table all unfinished business. Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Mofeta?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on.
Yes. Okay, that passes?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, so I think at this point, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Uh, this meeting of the Board of Education is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, uh, stay and have dinner or at least take some food with you.
I'm eating.